Okay.
One is hard. So it's in the form of. But okay. Okay.
Trust one two. Want to try that? So it's one, two. Okay, it looks like it's picking it up.
Yes, and then they can just.
So kind of who can I get to first? We have two right here.
Yes.
Are we? All right, I will. Start. So we've got our any other trustee comments we've Colleen's goodbye. We've mentioned the two calendar items as well as the potential for a date to be determined. Saturday at the farmer's market. Any other trustee comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to our executive director report.
Thank you. All right, so. Can see the things that were added from my report, just a few highlights. You see that I did a lot of engagement with the chairman of commerce. And so I just want to get some highlights behind that. So it's not like, why is she just randomly doing that? Well, there's a method to the madness. It was it's really just engage with the community and we have some of our community. Engagement department and other departments that can connect to the business community. So in fact, from one of those business cuttings ribbon cuttings, we were able to get a partnership with one of the businesses in the community. So we're doing the Scoville room over again and we're looking, I mean, it's been the same for 20 years. With the pictures of the kettle strings and Mr. Scoville. So Mr. Scoville has moved to a public place. You might find him peeking over the shelves at you. I believe it's on the third floor. And then Mr. Mrs. Scoville, the person who runs kettle string growth and Betty's Pizza and kettle string tavern. Who is he's not in the family, but the family business often. He has a partnership with the art league, the Oak Park Art League, and so we're going to have Mr. Mrs. Scoville be on loan. There. So we're working out the details now. He's super excited and that has borne some potential partnerships that we could do with the library. He's happy to have a fundraiser for us. There's things we can do there. So we're really excited about it. So not going to keep it. It's not like a bar where someone's going to get thrown against the wall or like rolling on the floor. It's like the most elegant place I've seen. It's over. If you haven't been, it's over on. I want to say off of Marion in the pleasant neighborhood down the street across from the opera lofts, I think they're called. So we're working that out right now. So I just wanted to give you some background. So again, methods of the madness on some of those things you see here. Just to kind of dive into some of the other reports, the anti racism and community engagement. If you've noticed from the report, if you had a chance, the home delivery was slightly down, but they're holding steady. And what you'll see is if that part's down, but there's increased engagement with senior centers and disabled living centers. So that those are up, which is really good. Also, the creative studio, we talked about, please save the date, love to see all your faces when we do the river cutting. That has been months in the making, the creative studio. So we're really excited to launch that. Again, it's on the third floor. So if you didn't have a chance to note, we had 20 tech girl workshops. So tech girls is it serves girls from grades five to eight to get them interested in STEM. And to learn all those things, how to work a 3D printer, do all those things because the girls, you know, it's it's a pretty male dominated field. And we get them interested early in science, technology, math and engineering. So we served 145 girls in those 20 programs. So even though the creative studio is not officially open, it's been used for that. So. Just thought I'd highlight that because I think that's great. Let's see. Oh, just to circle back on a question that was asked last time when we approved the borrower guidelines for last time. I think there were some questions around Chicago Public Library cardholders and how many? And so if you look in the report too, that's a highlight too. So the answer to that question is about, there's about 1800 or so. CPL cardholders that are registered to use their cards here. So I just wanted to circle back and because that was, I'm not sure who asked it, but that was a question. So that is in the report. So just to close the loop on that, we're one of the top three SWAN libraries who have CPL users. The other two is Eisenhower and Elmwood Park and us. So. Just to satisfy your curiosity, if you were still wondering, we didn't want to, we always like to return back when you ask us questions. Yes. So they use their car, they bring their CPL card and they register here. And then if you recall, they can use, they can check out everything physical, the digital is the part. And that's because vendors, the vendors, you know, you want to say you I have 55,000 users, so you can't add people from all over the place. Because then the price goes up and it violates the contract and all that stuff. But you know, like CPL has digital things too. So that's the only difference. Yeah. So just looking at the core use, just want to look at that really quick. Open myself back up. Scroll through that. Okay. So if you look at the first three, the new card, the new card holder retention, the market penetration, the net promoter score. Now you have data for the all of 2022. So you have all the quarters there. And so if you look, you can see for the retention, it's compared to our peer libraries, we are higher in terms of when people get a new card. Do they use it? Do they come? The market penetration also in comparison to our peer libraries. We are, we ranked higher than every quarter. And then I met promoter score is it's held pretty steady too. And if you notice the little notes about what the NPS means, so anything over 70 is considered world class. And so you can see we're well over 70 in our net promoter score. So I just wanted to highlight those three. And. You can see the next with the additions and the terminations on, you can look at those over. Had quite a few promotions, as you can see over the last month. And so that is it for my report. Do you have any questions for me? If if not, I want to pass it to Matt. Matt is, if I don't know if we said this last time, but Elizabeth is retiring, who is our director of facilities. So Matt is now at the table as he'll be integrated as part of the leadership team. So Elizabeth's doing her vacations out and that kind of thing. So it's not official official, but. As you've seen us do the last few times, I'm going to always have one of the leadership team highlight their department. So I'm going to pass it to Matt so he can give you kind of an overview of the last year or so. And I'm going to put this mic by you.
Hi, everybody, and it is Artoje. Artoje, that's all right. But yeah, so as Jocelyn said, I'm here to give you a little bit of an update. As part of the facilities portion of the report of what's going on in the building, in the branches from. Quarter four of 2022, quarter one of 23 and what we have planned going forward. So basically, since I started in August to to current and what's planned forward. So we have a little slideshow for you and. Actually, this is still showing up. All right. I can't seem to get the. All right. So some of the highlights for 2022. Actually, if you will all recall, I had the opportunity to speak with you briefly at the September board meeting. Kind of give an update. At that time, we had just finished applying a new floor finish to the second floor. It's low 2K. It was a long time ago. I don't expect anybody really to remember. So I can give you a brief overview of what I talked about then and where we're at with the project going forward. The library made a decision to move away from traditional floor finishing methods and go to this low 2K invisible protect. It's a two part water based floor finish that the manufacturer of eco surface uses in their facilities. It's supposed to have a long wear life. It's supposed to hold up to foot traffic very well. And over the duration of its lifespan, have a lower ongoing maintenance cost than traditional floor methods. So that decision was made even prior to my starting and it finished up with the second floor. Right around September, when when I gave you the update and I am happy to share now. As of today. We have rolled that floor finish out to all of the first floor. So over the Thanksgiving holiday through the Christmas holiday. The first floor was stripped down in stages, including the children's public space, Storytime Room, Children's Workroom. The patron services work area, the sorting room and the old public safety office. All of these floors were serviced, stripped down to base material and had low 2K invisible protect applied into coats. Over all the floors. It was an extensive project. It required a lot of coordinating with. Almost every department. And. We're really excited with the results. This is an ongoing process. We're going to look to roll this out into the the third floor for 23 going forward. But. All of this work represents a change in service. So we've been working with Alpha Building Maintenance, who does our our cleaning and our floor care. They worked with us, partnered with us and. Agreed to make this change in service going forward and kind of learn with us to how this works. So we've had a few speed bumps along the way. This is a. A procedure we've never done here. And we're learning as we go. We've got it. The last round was pretty good and we're excited to see the third floor. So that's all coming. It's going to be a lot of work, but we're excited for it. Happy to to wrap up that project. Also in 22, one of the first things I encountered that that we encountered going forward was. Repair proposal for chiller one. So chiller ones, it's 170 ton air cooled chiller. It's 20 years old. It's original to the building and it needed about $60,000 in repairs to function. Sorry, let me correct that. $60,000 in known repairs. And after that, they couldn't guarantee it would function. So they would repair it and then test it for functionality and then identify any repairs going forward. So that, given the fact that it's 20 years old, it's an old R22 refrigerant, which it's no zone depleting gas. It's not. It's seen it's it's yes, very expensive to to refill and. You know, air cooled units typically have a lifespan of right around 20 years. They've they've seen, they've seen their service. So the decision was made. To move forward with replacement. We went to bid. Bid was awarded to Hayes Mechanical and we will be replacing chiller one. Hopefully in August, if the lead time holds out. We we have the agreement signed. Everything is ready to go in November, but at the time they were quoting about 40 weekly time for for a new chiller. So fingers crossed that chiller two holds out. Through that duration and we can get chiller one installed smoothly. In August. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. Towards the end of in September and then again in December, we did some work over at the maze branch. We we had the flat roof sealed. So the flat roof had a number of blisters and some ponding going on. And we wanted to address that before it got worse. We worked with a company called Everseal. They have a. They have a roll on sealer with a 50 year guarantee. So we were able to seal the flat roof before it became problematic and hopefully prevent any leaks on the flat roof side for for years to come. And then we did some tuck pointing. So in the southeast corner of maize, there was a leak that was attributed to some open mortar joints on the southeast corner. So we had Futurity 19 come out, do some tuck pointing, some of which was identified in the 2016 capital asset study as a condition that warrants. Further observation. It's deteriorated. So we had Futurity 19 tug points. The north and south parapet walls from the roof line extended all the way up through the limestone caps. As well as the chimney from the roof line extended all the way to the cap. So this will ensure structural integrity and hopefully prevent some leaks in the future. And that all went very well. I was very impressed with their work. For 2023, it feels like it was just yesterday, but we're almost in April. A few things we accomplished in 2023. It started off with a whole bunch of staff moves and renovations. So one of the first projects that we completed was. The second floor staff locker room. We made that not a locker room anymore. It made that the new home for public safety and security. Facilities team did an excellent job of getting the lockers out. Repairing the floor, patching the walls, painting and with some coordination with facilities or sorry, with public safety, moving them in. And they're thrilled to have the space and we were really happy to to help them, you know, grow in to that space. Their old, their old office was a little more than a shoebox. So they're very grateful for that. Along with that, we moved. Special collections, community engagement. What else, Jocelyn? This was a special collections, community engagement. Oh, and we we made a room for the collection management librarians. We, they were kind of in the space next to the bib team office, but we we made that an appropriate office for them. And everyone's really happy with their spaces. All these projects turned out really well. Very excited for that. And everyone's really happy with their spaces. All these projects turned out really well. Very excited for that. As Jocelyn mentioned, we have the Sound Booth, which didn't go smoothly. It arrived damaged. So that's fun. But the Creative Technology and IT team really took the lead. They coordinated with the vendor. We met with them. They were able to come up with a solution where we would try to repair it in-house and see if we can fix the damage before we sent parts back for repair, for replacement, or got new parts ordered. They shipped the packages to us. A couple of the plastic channels on the perimeter were replaced, and some of the padding was damaged from where a forklift just ran right into it. And the Facilities Team did an outstanding job repairing it, getting it built, and getting it ready to go for opening in the near future. The other thing we did, we serviced the AMA. It's the heart of the library. It was new in twenty seventeen, and we had a full recertification done. So what that involved was flying a technician out from White Bear Lake, Minnesota, to go through the machine, start to finish, top to bottom, replace any worn-out parts, and address some of the software concerns we were having with it and some of the reject errors and hiccups that were slowing down the workflow for, for the sorting room. Early February, they came out. They went through it. It is working. Good as new. So with that, with a newly established, established annual PM agreement and just regular monthly maintenance from the Facilities Team, we're hoping that we ensure long-term reliability of the machine for years to come. So seems like a small thing. We were very, very excited to have that happen. So looking ahead for twenty-three, as Jocelyn mentioned just a few minutes ago, we're preparing the Scoville Room for a minor renovation. And like she mentioned, part of that's going to involve moving the paintings, the Scoville paintings up on the third floor. The Kettle Strings would be on loan to Kettle Strings Grove. But the room, as it exists today, doesn't really serve the needs of the library. There's the fourteen-foot conference table. It's very rigid. We have an increased need of, of space for staff to collaborate, to work individually when, when space is at a crunch. So the idea is to add power and data outlets to the exterior of the room, go to flexible mobile furniture where you can push it out to the perimeter, have individual workstations, push them together to have a conference-style table, or fold them up and push them out of the way. They'll all be on casters to have the room open and available. So that's something that's in the late planning stages. We're getting ready to move on that very soon. And then we'll be adding a new office, which I don't know why I can't get that camera away. It's not on my screen, so I apologize for that. But the photo on the right in the admin wing, that's an open space, I believe where reception used to be. We're looking to add a glass storefront to that. So it's going to be a glass ball construction with a sliding door. And the idea behind it is to address individual office equity for directors. So we have a situation right now where a number of directors are sharing offices, and it makes work challenging at times, having private confidential conversations, you know, just working in general. So that's a project that's well underway. We're working with a vendor right now. We should have a solution. And hopefully, just did have a minor setback, but hopefully by July first, we'll be able to have that office complete and move whichever director in there that it will be. And all the directors will have their own private space and be able to work. And the last slide I'll bring up is, is plans for both this year and, and long-term. The first thing we need to do is address electric needs throughout the building. We've started that project on the second floor, adding power and data outlets to the east wall that overlooks the park. But patrons, staff, and we all have recognized the need for added power. Computers, phones, maximizing floor space. It's something we're looking at on the third floor and the first floor. It's something we budgeted for. We're just trying to figure out the best way to do it. And once complete, hopefully, we can complete that as one project this year. Patrons will be very excited. Adult Services will be very excited. Children's will be very excited, which means I will be very excited. That's, that's the shorter term. The longer term is HVAC overall. Like we talked about at the start, Chiller One had failed, twenty years old. Chiller Two is also twenty. It's identical. So we've tentatively marked the budget for twenty-four as needing to replace Chiller Two as follow-up, because it's only a matter of time before it suffers the same fate as Chiller One. Further than that, I'm working with our mechanical contractor and a controls engineer ways we can upgrade our systems and improve efficiency and control and operation. What we're looking at doing is updating our equipment, adding ways, adding controls, energy valves, things to make us run more efficiently, reduce natural gas usage and make sure, energy usage, and make sure that our spaces are comfortable and stable for patrons, for staff, and for our collections, our materials. So this is, this is a long-term project. It's long-term goals. But the way I describe it and the vision I have, we are a five-star library in patron and community metrics. We have the potential to be a five-star library in operation and control metrics. It's gonna take a lot of work and a lot of planning. It's gonna be a significant budget commitment. But when we get there, we can be a flagship for the Chicagoland area in, in controls and efficiency. So that's what I have. With that, any questions? Oh, yeah. Yeah, a lot of this, all of this, our, the, the controls engineer that I'm, I'm starting to work with, a very smart guy, works with a lot of government accounts. So all of the combat incentives, the local and federal incentives, he's aware of. He knows, he's a project designer for, for these. So we, he knows the best approach to take and what's available.
I'd also encourage reaching out to the Park Fisher. They've done tremendous work on some of that efficiency thing, and they may have a key into some state-level grants through, through some of that that might be available to us.
Sure.
I have a couple of questions, but is there anybody else who has? So this, fair warning. Before my current job, I used to work for CBRE. I, I was, I was more in a management position than like an engineering operational, but I was at enough media that enough, we have a dangerous level. The flooring, do we have to move shelving for that?
It was all coordinated to be done around the shelving. So when we did the children's move, Barbara Fitzgerald had planned a large collection shift down there. So they came in, they stripped the floors. We had the shelves moved. They came back. They stripped the areas that the shelves previously occupied, and then they finished around everything in place.
At least once, if not twice, where we reconfigured some of the shelving. That's why I make sure that if we don't run into an issue where we have to bring somebody back in to redo that.
Yeah, and that's, that's something, that's something we're looking at and, and trying to plan out as best we can. Yeah.
We took out the locker room. Has there been any kind of equivalent for staff in, in its place, or was there not a need for a locker room anymore? I appreciate like the need for the office space, for the workspace, but a place for staff to put their things.
Sure. So on the first floor, there is an existing but smaller locker room. And we found that there wasn't a lot of usage in the locker room. So the size of the locker room on the first floor should accommodate any usage. And there was the Staff Wellness Room is also part of that. We are basically swapping. So what used to be the Public Safety and Security Office is in the process of becoming the new Staff Wellness Room. So.
And then lastly, several years ago, we did a commissioning of the building with, I believe it was Johnson. Is that having a play into some of the efficiency work that you're talking about? Or is this kind of a revisiting of that where we, the kind of the computer controls of some of the systems being brought up or replaced?
Kind of yes to both. So long-term, the plan would be to move away from Johnson Controls as-is and go to an open network and something that has open support. So same idea, same controls, same functionality, but with better support and the availability to monitor and address the system off-site remotely. So if there's an urgent emergency, we can be notified twenty-four-seven. We can monitor it from the computer. But yes, same idea. They were donated. They were donated, yeah.
Thank you, Matt Bertoggi.
Are there any other questions regarding staff reports? Hearing none, we'll move on to.
I'm sorry, the, uh, Lucy was in the Children's Services.
Yes. So we just, I, I don't think we're using him as we were before. So if we do again, we'll engage and use it that way and more like a, not a vendor, but what about, what's the word? Or like a contracted job rather than having him on payroll. So, yes.
Then we will move on to our financial reports.
Questions?
That is, begins on page sixteen.
So I have, I just to assess that the library received the seventy-four thousand. Which is part of the budget. How many more payments are we expecting of that presented?
Did you repeat that question? I wasn't sure. I heard four thousand. Yeah, that's one that we can't really plan for. It's not like a steady distribution. There's been years when we haven't gotten it. And that's why it's a little sketchy, even budgeting for it. And so it's basically, I don't know if you're familiar with it. Basically, there were some changes in the tax law. So this is meant to recover for government agencies some of the lost tax revenue that they had when they made those tax breaks. So like, yes, during COVID, we had budgeted really low. I'm not sure what the number is, thinking that it was gonna be bad. But then a lot of the businesses did pretty well. And so we actually received quite a bit more than we expected. And so it's a little hard to judge, and the distribution is not like planned, like regular property tax distributions.
So we could get none of the fifty-one percent on the fifth year.
Yeah, yeah. In that number, I think it went up to, from one twenty-five. I can verify that if you want. I think it was one twenty-five last year and a hundred the year before. And so as we get more, and I try to incrementally increase it to try and get close, but I also don't wanna overestimate what we're gonna receive. And so that's pretty volatile.
I noticed the art fund in here. I've lost it, sorry. I was just looking at it and it vanished. Is that something, is that planned for, or has there been no expenditure on our?
What we're kind of, because we had repairs, for example, like we, we improved security on the Hyundai Wiley. We put an acrylic cover on that. So, you know, somebody threw something at it or something like that. That's protected. With Aaron in the safety team, he's really kind of led that, that process of securitizing everything. We have motion sensors on the artwork, protecting certain pieces like that, that were the high-value ones. Those costs came out of that art fund. So it came down, has come down over the years. I think it was about sixteen thousand beginning of last year. And so we spend that down. So now where we're at is looking at it and say, there's not a lot of money left in that fund. So how do we start replenishing that? And that's something, it's a bigger discussion because there used to be, my understanding, it used to be an art committee. And, you know, people in the community, trustees, it was a bigger group that figured out what is the public art mean for the community and how does the library mess manage that? And so that, that's a discussion that needs to be had, figuring out how do we refund, how do we fund that fund to continue operating, protecting the art? Which pieces do we wanna maintain and all that kind of stuff? There's.
They're working on that in Special Collections. I know you all have noticed that you've been going over policies and reviewing them. So that's one, that's upcoming now. So we have a deadline. We're just bringing it up with it so you'll be saving it soon. Because you have the same question, like, what do we buy? How much do we wanna buy? How much, you know, you wanna be, you wanna be art dealers? Or do you wanna set like, all that is, is coming. So thank you for highlighting that.
So if there is a committee and you wanna trustee on it, I would be interested.
The last acquisition was the Chelsea. This last name, it was a small painting of a African-American woman. And we actually bought that with the funds there. But most of the funds have been used for restoration. The artist added two brackets. Particularly the one piece with that is the strings and paper has required a lot of repair over the years.
Yeah, that, the Jacob Hashimoto, he was just out twenty twenty-one, I believe, to do repairs. There was no charge on that. He came out to do that. He was doing an exhibit in Chicago. And so I coordinated with his assistant to make sure he got him out there. And so that was great. But yeah, Carol Harrison, the sculpture, as you walk in, the library, you know, it's bronze. Not sure what it is. And, but there were scratches and things on that. And so like previous year, we had a rest, restore, come in, clean that up, fix it up. So there's always that maintenance component of it.
And to Jocelyn's point, maybe I can determine are we an art gallery or a library? We have a really valuable piece. What, what to do with that is part of our legacy. These are big questions. Come on loan to art museums in the past. Of course, the museum paid for it. They paid for the insurance, the transportation, everything. But it's still, it, how many public libraries, and this is in the, we can, we'll have this discussion. But yeah, it's like, how many public libraries get a, get an ask to lend a, a piece of art that we have to, to an art institute in a, in a.
But also the amazing forethought to
Yes.
Have kind of acquired some of the pieces in the cultural impact of it. You know, I, I use the study, the, the private study rooms sometimes. And, you know, I'm sitting there and there's, and, and, you know, maybe they're not, you know, the most impressive ones in those study rooms, but there's still something about sitting there in a library, working and having. working and having, and having art around. And I think it's really valuable to the community and, and, you know, young people and, yeah.
It's another point of access. Most of what we do.
And it's another media. It's another media. It communicates. Like, it's just another form of communication there. So anyway, I, I find value in it and I would be happy to contribute time to it.
Along the D ninety-seven art gallery show that's happening in the lobby at the.
Oh, my gosh.
It's amazing.
I have seen so many social media posts about the library from that show. Like the amount that that has raised, you know, the, the kind of community conversation around the library is.
I love that we're able to be back over and doing that again, because that was always one of my favorite things that happened in the library every year is that. And then we would do a, a, a gallery with the high school as well. Art from high school and just giving those kids.
All the pictures of the kids, like.
You know, a showplace, uh, outside of the schools, you know, because it's, it's a, it's a different level of exposure in the community.
And the pride of those students.
Yeah. Oh, my God, my social media. He was just like, yeah.
Alright. And we will move on to, um, the dispersment journal. Is there, are there any questions regarding, that which begins on page thirty?
Thank you for the page numbers.
Anything? Any questions? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Moved by Madarima. Is there a second? Seconded by Colleen. I get the microphone back.
It was moved by Madarima, seconded by Colleen. Is there any further questions or discussions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, say nay. The motion is approved. Dispersment Journal, the resolution is approved. Uh, now onto additional reports. IGOV.
We had truncated meetings this month because of the DPOC kind of forum, but the big topic of discussion is the May forum, which I believe that is going to be on the sixth, yeah, Saturday, the sixth. Um, the topic is going to be, so it's, um, going to be open to all government bodies. Um, the topic of discussion is going to be around engaging with the public access from here. They require somebody to come in and discuss, um, how one can, you know, not just the Facebook groups, but other methods of communicating with our communities via social media. I think it's a pleasant home.
I don't have a location right here, but it's Julie Tappendorf.
Um, and they'll be, like, breakfast and questions as well. But, um, I went, the last time I went to my, last time we had this was in, when I came onto the library board. And it was a really valuable opportunity to meet the other government bodies. Um, I had a kind of, sort of, an eye of, but, um, it was another opportunity to meet other. Uh, but it's a, it's a, it's a nice basic round tables and it's a chance to meet one another. It's, it's a great event. Um, so May sixth.
Oh, it is Pleasant Home.
Pleasant Home.
Pleasant Home Continental Breakfast. Nine thirty to eleven thirty, maybe twelve.
Are they going to teach us how to be Chinese sympathizers and create TikTok accounts?
And it's working candidates and, um.
Well, by that time, it'll be.
Well, incoming, yeah, incoming and commissioners.
There was a discussion about whether or not staff, like you brought this up.
There would, no, Eric brought it up and I had some comments. There was, there was some talk about being, like they have at the township, they have a new communications person. And I said, well, the issues for a communications person for a trustee are different when it comes to this. So it may.
I would agree.
The right, that might not be the right fit. So they were going to look into that and talk to Julie Tappendorf.
And my understanding is the communication staff from the various, you know, the village, the township, the parks, the library, the school districts are all in regular communication and sharing ideas. So, I don't, I mean, not to say that staff can't come, but I, I, I don't feel like this, the communications professionals need, need the same, need the same treatment.
I'm a communications professional and I'm a trustee in two different parts of my life and it's very different issues.
Yeah. Okay.
And then there was talk about the senior center reopening in the round table, um, for the township. And what else was major? Well, the whole, the park district with the recreation center. Movement on that.
They were, Jasmine was all enclosed due to the weather.
Yeah.
I would.
A bunch of sarcasm, right? At the CRC. So hopefully you'll look over by then.
They said they were close to announcing the ribbon cutting date. They're close to announcing it. Um, they didn't quite have it.
Under promise, over perform. Okay. CAG did not meet. So Planet Green.
May I ask, Matt, Planet Green, that we, both he and I attended virtually. It's really quite exciting to, well, the cooperation, I think, among government entity entities. Uh, I particularly am impressed with what the, the park district does in terms of looking at, uh, Planet Green kinds of things. I, I learned so much. I mean, every light pole was going to be a charging station. Those kinds of things really, really quite something. I'm very happy that, that Matt was at that meeting.
I was only able to attend it, uh, in the beginning. I had, uh, had a LT training, totally active. So, and virtually for the first time.
The other wonderful thing about it is that we are working with other municipalities here. And so the, uh, Mayor Bradshaw was there and, uh, we're just really reaching out in that way. I, I would love to know a little bit more about how, this doesn't exactly do Planet Green, but a little bit more about how our library deals with neighboring libraries. We talk about Swan and all. But it was really interesting to, for us, once again, to meet with the library boards from Baywood and all these places, because we've done that in the past. I think these kind of cooperative things, this one sustainability and the environment goes very well. I really would like to know more about what's going on in Ellenhurst and other places.
I don't, um, I had it this last time, but, but we did meet. Um, and we also got commendation from Planet Green and what's the other one? It's like one generation, one.
Seven generations.
Seven generation. Thank you. I'm so horrible with all names and everything. Um, I, I attended a meeting with them and I told them about our partnership. So they want to talk to me more about that and give me more contacts. So we, I, I assembled Broadview, um, Forest Park, River Forest and Bellwood so far. So we, all the directors met here and we're going to do that bi-monthly. And so we talked about what we're already doing. We talked about like possible grants. Who do we, who do you reach out to? Um, and it was really, it was, it was great. Like we, you kind of could feel like you weren't doing anything, but you, then when you heard what other people were doing and like, oh, okay, so we are on track or like, oh, I never thought of that. Um, so it's been really great so far. And, um, I told, um, them about that. And so I'm meeting with one of the guys that did the presentation. And so they're going to like, I will give you all the rest of the people. So, um, I don't know about boards, but we've, you know, trailblazed with the directors at least. And, um, I don't know if you all remember, we also have a, um, environmental sustainability library or, um, coordinate, library coordinator who is on the job. She's just started. And so she, we have somebody looking at this all the time. So it's just not like, when we get done doing the chiller and then like, um, having LT meeting and then we look at the budget, maybe we'll get to it. Like we have somebody on it all the time, um, who is a connector. So, um, I'm really proud of our efforts too.
Um, I actually just realized that I had a follow-up question I could keep about to ask about, um, which was about the sanctuary. You said that you were ready and I was just wondering, um, that's the one.
Uh, sure. So I did, I did, um, have a meeting with Kevin Jackson. Yes. And so, um, after the election, he just said, just hold off. Can't really start it until we know where all the shoes are gonna fall. Um, and then, so they're on board. Um, I also met with his communication person. So it was myself, his communication person, um, and Kevin. So, um, in, at the very least, it'll be a proclamation. He wants to see if he can be an ordinance, if it goes that far, but we, you know, we just don't know who's going to be there. So, um, he said, when the time comes, like, you'll have me come down there and make the case. He thinks it'll go, um, because we already have things like that in Oak Park, um, with other initiatives like that that say we're a sanctuary for, um, a few other things too. So it's looking good. That's all. We're just waiting for the after-election. That's all. You're welcome.
If you want any trustees to join you, let us know.
What'd you say?
If you want any trust.
Okay, we'll do, we'll do, we'll do.
Friends.
Hi, friends. Okay. So, um, the friends met on March twentieth. And, um, just some quick highlights. Um, we did turn in our wish lists. So almost, you know, every department turned in something. We haven't, um, it's the first time in a while that we did. Um, so they approved, um, a little over forty thousand dollars with those, um, just that icing on the cake kind of things that really give us another oomph to, um, what we do. For instance, um, in the creative studio, uh, we're going to get them a glow forge. We didn't have that before. We had like, you know, you know how we were talking about like roller blades versus, like, we had a, like, we had like a knockoff version of it that had already fallen down. It was broken. Um, we have the fiftieth anniversary of hip hop coming up that we did get a grant with. I don't know if you remember us talking about that. We have a, a partnership with Queens Public Library and the Institute of Museum and Library Services. So we're one of the libraries. We were featured in Rolling Stone. So it was like, it was like Las Vegas, New York and Oak Park, which is outside of Chicago. But, but I mean, we were in there. So, you know, thank you to, um, Stephen Jackson for making that connection for us. They didn't do it.
Okay, then we totally get to lord that over.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. I don't understand it, but they didn't, they didn't go after it. So, yeah, I don't, I don't know. So, um, oh, so we got, like, we matched that one. We got like a three thousand dollar grant. So they matched it. So we, um, have some great programming coming up with that. So just, those are just some highlights, some, some reading program, things like that. Just a reminder, another save the date, the book sale, uh, again, is July fourteenth, fifteenth and sixteenth. Um, so save the date for one of those. Pat Kokover was recognized for fifty-three years in helping the friends. So that was awesome. Um, and we talked about, um, getting some kind of plaque or something on the wall to commemorate that, um, as well deserved. Um, yes. Oh, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, I want, it's usually like the last four to six weeks leading up to it. So it's coming soon.
I saw it on, or either, or in email.
Yeah.
In June.
And we did, um, just unrelated, we got, um, also, um, another, for all year round, when people ask, uh, you, Colleen, I think you had that contact. Was that you that gave us the contact? Yes. So that worked out really well. Um, and so we're going to use them year round. The young lady that you connected us with, um, really great. So, um, so that way people don't, we don't always have to say wait till the book sale. Um, it doesn't, there's no harm in having two partners. So, thank you for that. Alright, that's it for the friends.
One friend, several years ago, the friend gave us a grant to possibly have a sister city, a sister relationship.
How are you?
Mm-hmm. And I think they, they authorized three thousand dollars for that. It, of course, fell apart for political reasons.
Okay.
Nothing to do with us, or had something to do with Cuba and had a lot to do with Washington.
Oh.
But, um, I don't know that we ever reported back to the friends why that night was suspended. Because we actually were almost, we almost had, we were going to embed a librarian from Cuba
Oh.
here in, in Oak Park for a time.
Okay, are you asking for a follow-up perhaps for the next time?
So I, I, I don't know that anybody, David was involved with this.
So we just want to make sure that the.
The friends, no.
Okay.
Oh.
And that there, there was three thousand dollars that was allocated and never used.
Okay.
Because it was beyond our control.
Okay.
Okay.
So, if, if I'm hearing it right, just remind them that it's available and see if we're going to proceed with it.
Know why, why should we?
Okay. Okay.
If it's, if it indeed, if they even know that it's being held.
Okay.
And I believe the amount was three thousand dollars.
Okay.
It was a wonderful idea.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, that's it.
Alright, do we, next item would be the approval of closed meeting minutes. Do we have any? We have none. So we'll move on to unfinished business nine B, holidays and scheduled building closing policy for discussion. Uh, Suzanne wanted to.
Yeah, so, um, this was something that, that I raised when we were approving the calendar. And, uh, so appreciate the rapid response from staff with info data proposals. We had a really rich conversation a couple of meetings ago about all the different facets that could show up with this. And, um, then staff came back with a couple draft options, draft option A. This is page fifty-two and fifty-three. So there's draft option A and draft option B. Um, and Christine and I had some conversations about it and then reached out, uh, uh, to some organizations that are taking a fresh look at holidays. Um, basically, we were just wanting, you know, when I first raised the issue, it was like, let's take a step back and look at this calendar and, and try and figure out, you know, how the days, the closing days on there might reinforce dominant culture. Um, what's missing? Does it reflect twenty twenty-three or the time when these holidays were created, which were not there anymore? Um, so we got great information from staff. They came back. We reached out to some organizations that do equity and inclusion work. And Christina will talk about, um, in a bit about, um, one organization that she saw come through her email. Um, one of the things that we found is that floating holidays seem to be really important in the direction when people are trying to address this. So, when we looked at some of the suggestions that were coming at staff with these different options, it looks like we don't want to get rid of floating holidays because that's where there's, we can't possibly cover every religious and cultural holiday and day off that anybody might need. Like, there's just too many. There's multiples for each cultural group, each religious group. So, um, having the floating holidays allows people to be able to have the days off that they need. And also kind of as a public government entity, where's there some sense in kind of removing religion from the closing holiday? Now, we live in the United States. And, um, you know, the broader culture centers and structures so much around Christian holidays and a holiday that many indigenous people um, mark as a day of mourning. We can't get away from that. That's so deeply entrenched in schools and government and all the other days off and everything. So we can't completely like skip that. We can't change it all overnight, but we can move the needle forward. And one of the ways, um, that we can do this, is to kind of, um, take the, the religion out of the names and take, um, Thanksgiving out of the name. So we came up with, um, a recommendation for the rest of the board. Um, and one of the issues during this part of the process, when we were talking with Jocelyn, is that the staff does not have any days off between January first and end of May. And that that impacts morale and capacity to, uh, do their jobs. So we support the addition of closure days in this period. Um, and while giving staff the needed break that they have, it also seems like an opportunity to increase awareness and visibility uh, of more events and people that help round out the picture of what we and who we celebrate in our community. So that it doesn't look just, you know, kind of, oh, that's where. So that it doesn't look just, you know, kinda, oh, that's from nineteen fifty, what, you know, this doesn't look at all like Oak Park. So, um, Martin Luther King, adding Martin Luther King Junior Day on draft option A seems like a good move forward to kind of meet both those needs. Uh, we were wondering if there are other spring dates worth evaluating, you know, and, and elevating in lieu of President's Day. So that's still an ongoing conversation. Um, you know, when you look at these calendars, missing are women, LGBTQ people, people of color in history, et cetera, or some dates and some activities that have happened in history. So, here's the recommendation. We recommend draft option A, but with some requested changes. One, names of Thanksgiving and Christmas days off changed to some naming like autumn and winter break or closing, closings, or autumn, winter pause, or whatever might come up. We imagine that Jocelyn and the rest of the leadership team may want to weigh in on this naming and may have some other options, maybe some better options than we thought of. Um, two, keep the four floating holidays in order to accommodate staff needs for paid time off on dates that are not covered in the closing schedule. And three, s- look at some other options for a second spring closure day presented for consideration in lieu of President's Day. We're particularly excited about a focus on people, events not already recognized in the closings calendar and dominant culture. Uh, we suggest requesting a new draft with these changes to be presented at our next meeting uh, to keep the ball moving forward. Uh, we want to keep this, the discussion on this issue from growing too big. Um, you know, we all love to talk at things and look at things from different angles. Uh, so we don't want it to get too big, but we also don't want to miss such a valuable opportunity to support the vision, mission, values, and strategic priorities of the library, the board, and the community. Um, so Christina, I, I kinda, I kinda threw it all in there, but if there's anything you wanna add, sorry. Was this even working?
Yes.
Oh, good.
Uh, no, I don't really have anything to add. I think you said it beautifully. I, um, I think the point of not having any holidays between January and May is very valid. And there was something else, just the fact that, um, oh, like, you did some research about, uh, other libraries that we consider progressive and, and I think it's kind of surprising that it seems like, uh, we didn't get like a comprehensive list or anything, but it doesn't seem like this has been tackled by other libraries. And so I think it's a real opportunity to kind of show, I don't know, so, and some attempt at, at handling this. Um,
What was the, what was the word that, um, was the article that you forwarded?
Okay, well, the, I, um, so I think there is like more of a movement to, to move towards floating holidays, and that's why we wanna keep the floating holidays. Um, the, it's big equity. That's what the blog is called. And, yeah, that was highlighting a childcare center that went fully floating holidays. Um, I think it's something to keep in mind, but as a public, open institution, like, I, I think there are things to consider that are different, but it's nice to keep in mind. And I, I will share that with your job.
So it's that, it's that thing about, you know, us, it being a public community space, you know, the fact that when other places are closed, you know, the that we might be a place that people can come to and continue to do work, or children can be here. I just, um, I'm trying to figure out how we balance that in the
There's really great data that they provided us, um, comparing with other, the other, um, Oak Park governing bodies and other libraries and rails in terms of the number of, um, days off and which days off. Um, and then there's also data about, um, usage on particular days, um, the traffic ends.
Yeah.
And the fact, if you look at the calendar and the fact that from January first through, what is it, the end of May, no closure days. And to, in Johnson's point, like, some
Well, I think
staff don't get any relief if the library's open because they're already, they're always on, even if they're not particularly on that day.
That's like, that was my takeaway, too. It's just like, you don't get a chance to breathe unless, like, everything is shut down in some cases. So that, that influenced me a lot, too, thinking about that.
And if you look at, um, page, I'm having a paging issue. It's in, right in that, there's the twenty twenty-three holiday closure practices review of, um, in the Village Road Park.
Fifty-four, page fifty-four.
Thank you. You know, that, uh, there's, there's definitely something to be said for that. Um, but basically, the part that I didn't talk about is, um, plan B, the, the, the option B, you know, with it, which was trying to, like, put in other religious holidays. Like, you're just never going to get them all. And that feels like chasing something and possibly making the situation worse. Um, and so the idea of, you know, trying to take, and, you know, we know that taking the name out of, like, re-changing the name for Thanksgiving and Christmas, everybody knows we're in the United States. We know what's happening then. It doesn't completely ameliorate, I mean, it doesn't even close to completely, but it does move it forward a little bit. And I was really shocked to find that some of the progressive libraries, and it was just a cursory look. We, you know, we could dive into it more with eh, through the ALA or some other people in, in library organizations, but, um, I think taking the religion out of it and then possibly seeing if that second spring one can also kind of elevate either an event, you know, that, that kind of balances out some of the other events, you know, in terms of weight or, um, like, May Day or something, you know, or, um, or people, you know. Um, but I think focusing on the spring is important because there are already holidays in, you know, in the summer. Cause I was gonna say something to do with, um,
I'd like, I'd like to hear from staff as they, as they provide some additional feedback on this. One thing I'd like the, just to put in context with this, this table of other days is, like, the comparison to including the school stuff with like, Juneteenth and Independence Day, those are summer break. Like, the schools are already closed. So, and for the city of Chicago and Cook County in the state, there are still many public offices and services that are still running those days, even though it's quote a holiday. Cook County Hospital's still open, CTA, PACE are still running. There are a lot of public facing services that are still open on all of these days that are quote closed. So, like, there is a context to, is to the point that's been raised about us being a service. And yes, it is important for us to, to recognize and, and provide respect and recognition for certain issue, you know, you know, people and ideals in, in those recognitions of time off, but we are, I, we, it's the, it's been mentioned many times. We are also then closing our doors as a resource to, for people who do not have electronic access or are as comfortable with electronic access to our resources, for them to access on those days, the physical media that also provides information about the issues that we want to promote and recognize. So it is a balance that we have to be comfortable with the trade-offs for, but let's, I, 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 I feel like as someone who has like, worked on Plasky Day when, quote, the county was closed, but I was still working. And as someone who has worked in government offices on, quote, closed days, those closed are not really closed for, for state offices, because there are still people working, there are still services provided. And that's not to say that we should be open all of those days, but let's have a, I wanna have, like, a real recognition of what those words mean where they're on this chart. Cause I, I understand that, like, other things are closed, like rails, yes, their offices may be closed, but they're not staffing a front desk checking out books either.
Which day?
Any of them. Or like this, this chart with the green and the red with holidays. Rails offices may be closed, but they're, they're not a library. They're not providing, they're not checking out services to people. They are, you know, they are an important resource that are, that libraries use, but it is not the same as being a comparison to me.
Those are both high usage days for us with, for obvious reasons, right? The schools are closed on those days, so there's lots of people in here. I mean, I
What was the average is twelve eighty-one?
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, it's, I mean, day after Thanksgiving, that day, which
Right.
last time, that was a low usage day.
Right.
Um, but I think, I mean, Suzanne, to your point, the last time we all talked about this, like, I agree that this calendar has issues, right? And it's definitely dominant culture, but I don't see adding President's Day. Right? If, if we're gonna really do justice to your sentiment, then either we nuke the entire holiday calendar in its entirety and everybody gets fifteen floating holidays, or like, we're just gonna continue to, right, like, talk about which day gets added. And I think it, we really need to think about balancing the services that we provide to the community with giving staff time off. So either, right, like, if we really wanna do justice to your comment, then I don't see a path of adding days to this calendar. I think you, what is likely.
Well, I mean, um, if I, I, I also, I'm, of course, um, worried about days that typically other parts of the community will, you know, so, for usage reasons. Why do we have to follow any of that? Why does it have to be President's Day? Why can't, like, Well, that's what the proposal was, that, that they look into a different day than Right, so not, not a floating holiday where individual people are making Day. Yes. That elevates somebody that we want to elevate and also gives them Well, but it, right, or, or, I guess what I'm thinking about is maybe even, like, you could have, um, like, in, you know, like, schools have institutions or something, but, and conceivably, there are people who are doing some training, but an institute day without the training, does that make sense? Right, Jocelyn suggested one thing, it's, oh, Staff Wellness Day or something. Right. And, yeah. So, yeah, so one option would be to have it renamed on that day. But what I was saying is that it would be nice to look at some possibilities for using, if we're going to give, have another day for staff and close the library to the community, to also, like, have some, like, balance out the picture of what we're presenting as important days. Um, MLK Junior Day, it doesn't, unless we can, like, have a library open all the time and not have, you know, staffing issues. You know, it would be good to have libraries available all the times, but if we can't do that, I, you know, to have these other holidays and then have staff not have MLK Junior Day off doesn't seem right.
I agree. I think, I said this the last time we all talked about this, which is, the floating holiday was designed for people who work in hospitals and places that don't have a quote, like, I'm a fireman, right? Like, I don't get Christmas Day off, I don't work Christmas Day. And so in an exchange, I give you this day that you get to take. And the reason for that is because they provide a service that can't, that doesn't stop, right? And I understand that we as a institution stop. But again, if we're gonna, if we're gonna be looking and thinking about what we're doing to give, to balance both giving employees rest and giving people a day off, closing the buildings, especially on days where we know that we have high usage, that the community is using our buildings, I don't think this gets to what the original sentiment of your comment was, right? Like, if we're saying, like, let's keep the buildings open on days that are high usage, that is a completely different equation. Or let's close the building on days, let's close the building on days that have low usage, and then those will be the fifteen days that the library is closed in the general year.
Right, but that wasn't the original, no. That got folded into it and we, and the day after Thanksgiving was added and gratefully without the word Thanksgiving in it, uh, you know, so here suggesting that Thanksgiving, the naming for Thanksgiving and Christmas get taken off of it, so we do not have any holidays that are religious. Now, we know that it's not quite there, but we're not there. So are we gonna just keep saying Christmas, Christmas, Christmas? Well, also ignore everything else now. And the floating holidays, I think, I mean, the floating holidays do allow people who have
Yep.
another religious holiday or cultural holiday to, to take that off.
I just, I hear your point about, like, there's, there's, right, that I made this comment last time, like, it's gonna melt our brains when we look at all the holidays, right? But embedded in the sentiment of what you're saying is that all of these are problematic. I mean, we're gonna have the Fourth of July on this list, too, like, that's problematic, too. Like, I mean, there's just no end to, so, again, like, like, what I hear you say is none of us, none of us.
That's not what I said, but
Well, I mean, like, then we, that's the only solution to that, right? Is that like,
I don't think we ever make any steps forward if our only solution is either none or all. Like, that's not how progress happens.
So the suggestion is adding holidays, peace, meal?
No, no, not piecemeal. The idea would be that this would, that, right, we were talking about that this would be it, and then this would be it going forward. But not to do the option B, because option B seems like a really bad idea to me. With all of the holidays, option B and option, they were also talking about taking two of the, um, the floating getting holidays away. And we don't think that, we think that you start taking away floating holidays, you're making the problem worse.
And I think to your point, you're, you're saying you realize that. You recognize exactly what you're saying. There is no, there's no fix to it. Um, and you've said that. And so what we use floating holidays for, like you say, we're not a fire department. It is exactly for that. For all the holidays that we can't put on there that people have, it's for them to use it for that. So they have the option for it. Um, I think Ted made the point, too, like, are we gonna add Chinese New Year? We'll, we'll be doing this until ad infinitum. So to Suzanne's point.
But I don't know that that's a bad thing. I think that, you know, like, what we signal, the, when we start in a process that could, in its logical end, be infinite, is that we're saying, as people, we hear more and more
Right.
from different kinds of people
Yes.
who haven't been heard before.
Yes.
And we include them.
Absolutely.
That makes other people in our community feel empowered and be like, here's a space.
Right.
That's like listening.
Right.
So then let's go, and then
But that has to have a process, too. So then what will happen, like, we never had Juneteenth before, right? We never had Juneteenth before, but now it's a federal holiday. So then the opportunity comes, um, I think more things will be added. But then that way, we're in alignment, and we're not like, and it, it is bad in that you don't wanna be changing it every year. The staff won't know what to do. We don't, we don't know what day it is. We don't know what board meeting is gonna be. It, it is bad in that sense. We wanna, we wanna have it.
I mean, like, I don't know.
We don't wanna do that.
We draw the
We draw the line, like, this group of holidays and these groups of people are worth recognizing, but we're done now.
That's what I'm saying. And so, in fact, that's my, that I am, I should say I'm an atheist, but I should, I wanna point out that when we say that we, when we talk about taking the religion out, which I think is important of, obviously of state things, there are going to be some cultural traditions because they're celebrated by cultural minorities, which are going to be around, like, religion is the only thing that is being recognized. So, like, we, we don't, you know, eat is eat, like, that's, uh, you know, Ramadan is on right now, and that's a religious holiday. So we get, if we say we take all the religion out, we're like treating with one felt one second, but we're treating, treating with one, like, color, all different experiences. You know, there are different minority communities which have different experiences right now, and
Well, option B is there. It's there. You saw it.
No, but I'm not saying necessarily option B. I'm saying that I think we're talking about several different things. We're talking about stopping a break between January and May.
Yes.
That's, I, I think we're all in agreement that that's something that needs to happen. We're also talking about, like, looking at, um, maybe not shutting down the library at the, at times that are high usage, but I would say, so I'm agreeing with your point in principle, Colleen, but I think what Suzanne's saying, looking at the data, is something like MLK is actually a lower usage time.
It is.
Even with what you were saying, then MLK would be one of the days that the building was closed. Even with what you were saying, then MLK would be one of the days that the building was closed. And I, I think that that's reasonable.
Yes.
Like I think it takes care of the, doesn't take care, but begins to address the January to May issue. I, I'm just saying that. There's not going to be one ideological solution to like a thorny. Political situation. So in the meanwhile, we don't, I don't think we like shut down the whole effort because. We don't know what the logical end will be. Like we, let's, let's, I mean, what a fantastic problem to have. There are so many. Uh, Asian Americans that we feel like Lunar New Year needs to be something that's recognized in the library. Like it, wouldn't that be a fantastic issue? It's not, but I'm just saying that. But sure, but you know, I. So let's, let's invite those people in. Like when we start having. I think when we start recognizing that there are important parts of a community that need like some kind of. Public recognition, then hopefully more people of our community stand up, right?
This is the other piece of the conversation that didn't make it into my comments, um, is the idea that. Religious and cultural events are being celebrated by the library. By events in this room.
Yes.
By things that go out in emails, by the books that are displayed. By, you know, there, there are all these other avenues as a library. To celebrate those aspects of our community that isn't connected to. This tradition. You know, and when you were talking about what we're, you know, taking out the religion, I mean, we're not really even, it's not, I'm not that happy with the idea that. You know, we're just changing the name for Christmas and Thanksgiving. I mean, those are both seriously problematic. Structures in every piece of our culture and it's, I, I don't like it, but that's where we are.
No, I.
Library like progressive, like super progressive libraries in super progressive communities in California haven't even like. Begun to address it. It's just, it's.
I am agreeing with you Suzanne.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm happy that this is an intermediary, but it isn't.
Suzanne, the name, the, the naming of things, of course, is important. If you look at like Christmas, International Workers' Day, the first of May. The Catholic Church decided to call it Saint Joseph the Worker Day. They made it a religious holiday.
Right, so it, it's just a, it's an inch, it's an inch forward in a like. Thousand mile long process. That is much bigger than Oak Park Library, all the other governments, all the other school structures, all of them.
But that's never stopped us before.
No, I know.
And I, and I think that, I'm just saying that I don't think you should like step back too much from the, from what. You all are trying to do. Like I think that that's a, I think option, I, I guess I'm trying to say that option A sounds like a good thing. I think that we. Find more. Places that we can break in the spring, right? Not when I say we, I mean, the, the, the stop, but. Based on the kind of, of data that you're showing, MLK sounds like it would be a, a good contender for, for something like that because the. Numbers are lower.
But then you, you say you're adding more, but I hear you all say there's a concern about being closed a lot. We're not really asking for like. One, like more and more, where we, it really, to your point, the beer points all over the place too. It became a larger conversation that we brought to you that was broader than just the holidays because there are some, so many other pieces to it. So what we, that, you know, like the fact that we have, you know, we had, we were on the lower end of aligning with what other libraries do. Government agencies are closed. We are a local government agency ourselves. I mean, there's childcare impacts for people who work here. Um, you know, there is a burnout aspect of it all too. Uh, we're not corporate America. This is one of the things that we can do. Um, this is what happens, you know, you get some of these days off that you wouldn't necessarily get. You know, we're a five-star library, fifteen years running, four and five star. I wish I could get everybody a bonus, but I can't. So one of those things that we can do is perhaps, so we, we're not asking for more. We really just want to align with what. You know, our entities have, you know, if the village can close on President's Day, uh, which they were, and we were here. Um, and we did look at the data. I mean, I, we, we are a pretty busy library, which is what makes us great, right? But the, those two days in particular that we're talking about, they are lower. People do do other things. People do do volunteer work. It's an opportunity for our staff to get that opportunity too. So that's, you know, it, it brings other pieces of the conversation in too. So what we really, um, you know, I, I don't think it shuts down the conversation, but it like, it gives us somewhere to start. Um, you know, to Suzanne's recommendation proposal, we could do a renaming thing. We give the, we don't take away the four floating, and so we have that option. So people can use it until we get to a point where we can say. Okay, we do have Eid, we do have Ramadan. I think things are changing. Like I said, you know, like I said, Juneteenth was not a twinkle in anybody's eye. And now it's a federal holiday that we observe, so. Right, exactly, exactly. So I think it is coming. Yeah, I think it is coming. And then we could, you know, we could move as it comes, you know, but.
I, I was really, when we talked and you shared that, um, y'all don't really get, like especially leadership team. And managers don't get a big break unless the library is truly closed. Like I wonder if that's a separate. Thing that we can address somehow, like, cause I don't want people working. Like I don't want that to be true. I don't want it to only be that like the library is closed and that's your off day. Like if you're off, I hope. That's respected, right? So like, I, I wonder if that's almost like a precursor to this conversation of like. Whether the library should be closed or not, because. I am in the camp of like, like ideally, I would love to see the library open more than not, which it is, like you've mentioned. But I also don't want that strain on staff. So thinking about like. I want a culture where like, if you're off, you're on, right? So like, I don't know, I don't know.
Like we will suspend your email for like, like for like the three days you're, like when you're on, on a vacation day, we, we like switch your email off. Like don't even like bother trying to log in.
Well, what I meant by that, to clarify, we, we, and we do establish a culture of wellness. We do say, we, we talk about this all the time. Don't say you're working from home. Be sick. If you tell me you're sick, don't say I'm working from, like, take the time. What I mean by that is it's unavoidable. So like if, if we are open, our, um. And some Matt has to call me. He's gonna have to call me. If there's a flood, if the lights go out, and then we have to activate and talk about what we're gonna do, that's, that's still work. So when the li, what I meant by that, when the library is totally closed, then everybody is at home. There's nobody that fell down and broke something, they gotta tell me about it. There's no crazy stuff, you know, like there's everybody. Including the leadership team, including the managers can shut down. It's not that we're forcing them to, like, we're not like. But it's just, that's what I meant by that.
Like the emergency shouldn't exist, but.
I think they're very good. I, I, I was so pleasantly surprised. I think I went to a conference and I was like, who's the person in charge? They're like. We're, we got you. We're all in charge. We, so I, I want you to know that we do have that there, but I, what I just meant by that is. When we're not closed, when we are closed on those vacation days, when it, the library is totally closed. The electricity gets rest, everything is off, like, you know, we can turn the water off for that day. And then nothing can happen. And then we can truly, you know, be with our families and do what we can do. So, you know. That's all.
So Steph will, will come back with some, some thoughts on.
Yeah, tell me where we are. Where would you like us? Thoughts on renaming? Is that what I'm hearing?
I, 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 it sounds like. Perhaps, uh. Around draft option A. With perhaps, uh, not necessarily. Set on President's Day as, as a second holiday in that timeframe.
Okay.
Like if there is another. Yeah, what, if there are some other options of something that we can do, as I tried to denote to Jocelyn, are Melville Dewey Sucks Day? Find it, there you go.
I just want to say Melville said, I'd prefer not to, do you, do you have any reading? Part of the script, there's a short story in which one, I, I think well pointed right now, one character just refuses to do any work. Like every time his boss gives him work, he just says, I prefer not to, like, and the whole place shuts down and we have to move and. He just like lives in the office and they're like, you have to move out. He's like, I prefer not to. That's Melville, so. Can be funny too.
There you go. And then some suggestions for the, um. The food holiday in November and the, um, capitalistic holiday in December.
Okay. Uh, did, did you all like winter break, fall break?
Yeah. And keep, and keep the floating.
Keep the floating.
Yeah.
Heard that. And we thought it was a give back since we were asking. So, you know, we try to be reasonable people. But what we're hearing you say is you don't need to do that. Keep the four, which is great. Thank you. Yeah, we talked, we talked about energy, you talk about plantagree all the time. I mean, it's a, it's a nice, it's a, you know. The thing is, everybody takes them all different. No. It's fine. Um, any consensus around renaming President's Day? And using it for something else. I only ask that because the rest of the world does have it off in our world. And that affects staff here. If so, if my school is closed, if, you know, my caretaker is not, you know. Is, is there any interest in that?
Is there any interest in the day or in the?
Keep, keep the day, name it something else. In, in conjunction with what you all talked about, we're keeping Thanksgiving, but we call it something else. And I only ask because it's just easy to align.
The biggest part of President's Day, schools are closed and there's furniture sales. So. I mean, I mean, in, in reality of like, how much, like outside of for, like. Outside of discussions of rooms like this and, and certain, and more of the act, in the activist circles. How much of the population is really even knows that President's Day is happening?
The point of that is that. It's an opportunity to, to bring in something else, to balance out this. When I, where this whole can of worms that I opened, thank you, you're welcome. Um, is that, yeah, you can like glance at this list and it's like, wait, what year is this? You know, we had some, you know, some of it still seems really rooted in the past. And that it's, it's very white European Christian center. So. With the goal of actually more actively getting it away from that and the whole culture moving away from that. Trying to make some changes. So some of that is making some things that have had taken up too much room. Take up less room or at least have less naming rights. Now like less visibility. And then other things that haven't had enough visibility, having more visibility. So we do not have, like, there's all these days and people on here. These dead white men and there's no women.
So why not call it something else? And the village is closed that day too. So that's the other one that, so. We were here, the schools are closed, the village was closed, and we were with like sadly walking around. Um, not having any holidays since, uh, Christmas time. So it's just a thought. Well, you know what? I hear the recommendations. We'll bring it back. We can bring both options.
And it's, you know, it's, it's tricky because I lived in L.A. and there was, um, there was something in April that was, um. Freedom of, what was it? But, um, do you remember Stephen?
So it's President's Day could be Memphis State.
Sure.
But it was, uh, Freedom of Information Day or, yes, Freedom of Information Day. You know, around March sixteenth, I'm like yay, and then it's James Madison, so like. Reported to be against slavery, but enslaved people. Um, so, you know.
Every day is.
And that's on A.L.A.
There's always gonna be something that somebody problematic did on.
But the point is that we're trying to, these days are there, they were originally made to like celebrate. The, like these presents. And yay, we did that for how long? Okay, we. Everybody knows, you know, Washington, we all know them. And now, you know. There's other people that are not known and are not recognized and are not celebrated. And. So anyway, so there may be some other options, but it does take a little, a little bit digging down.
Well, I mean, again, I know it, this doesn't take any digging. It's very, you know, but like, uh. Again, February is Black History Month, so I think that something like President's Day could. You know, that day could easily be made something that begs respect to.
Yes, that is one option.
Right. To, to go with what you're saying, which is that we, yeah.
We name it something else.
And provide, you know, that service that, that's not closing. You know, there are, the, the services we provide, the programming we provide also provides. That in a way that I think is beneficial, more so than, oh, I can't go to the library because this.
But that, but that day. But that day. Low, lower traffic.
And if someone else's in our world is closed, when I say our world is local government kind of people.
Yeah.
So the village is closed, other libraries are closed.
Yeah.
So that's all I'm trying to just keep capturing. If we can align with that, respecting what you're saying Suzanne, about the problematic nature of it. And come up with something. So we'll bring some options to discuss. I don't want to belabor. I know it's getting late. I think there was something else on there too.
I really did try and keep the.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
But yeah, so just a couple options, like some naming options and maybe if there's.
Sure, gotcha. Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Okay. There is nothing else. We, at the end of our agenda, is there a motion to adjourn?
Are there comments online that you want to acknowledge or not?
Is there, Colleen, would you like to move to adjourn our, your final meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Separation of Georgian state. And capitalism in like one fell swoop. And you really thought, like, yeah. Five minutes discussion tops. I was a touring january.
It is such a thought provoking conversation.